Emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. And in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020 oh four. This public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporarily to this meeting, which we authorize pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are A. Providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are tonight using Zoom for this electronic meeting. The meeting ID is nine one zero two seven two three two nine eight two. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporarily during this meeting through this platform. And the public has access to contemporarily listen in if necessary participate in this meeting through dialing the following number. One six four six five five eight eight six five six. When asked for the password, the meeting ID again is nine one zero two seven two three two nine eight two. Or you can click the following website address. Which is HTTPS colon backslash backs slash support dot zoom dot us dot H C. Backslash E N dash U S. Followed by the ID nine one zero two seven two three two nine eight two. We have provided public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the board at HTTPS. So I mean, colon backslash backslash W W W dot newmarketnh.gov slash planning board dash planning board. Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem from the public, please call six zero three six five nine three six one seven. Extension one three two one. Or email channel thirteen at newmarketnh.gov. Again, that number is six zero three six five nine three six one seven extension one three two one. We'll be adjourning the meeting if the public is made unable to access this meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. I'd like each member to state their presence and please state whether or not there's anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Again, Valerie Shelton will be chairing the meeting and there is no one present in this room with me. Bill? Bill, you need to unmute.
Bill Ducey, nobody in the room.
Christian?
I am present and alone.
Please state your name.
Christian Matthews, present and alone.
Thank you. McCall? Jamie?
I'm Jamie Bruton, present and alone.
Sarah?
Sarah French, I'm present and alone.
Ted?
I'm Ted Seeley, present and alone.
And also with us this evening is town planner Diane Hardy.
Present and alone.
Thank you. Walter Cheney who is here with us and Timothy Kremmon, our Channel 13 guru. Okay, with that out of the way, I'll go to the agenda and the first. Meeting at this first item on our planning board meeting of Tuesday, July 14th, 2020 is the pledge of allegiance. Anyone stand and say the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag. Of the United States of America and to the republic. Nation under God. Justice for all. Okay. Can the board still hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, next order is public comments. I don't see any members of the public other than Mr. Cheney. In the meeting. So close public comments. Next is review and approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes as submitted.
That's June 19th, 2020.
Correct.
I'll second it.
Second by Jamie Bruton. Motion by Bill Ducey. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Bill Ducey?
Aye.
Christian Matthews?
Aye.
McCall? Okay, Jamie?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Ted?
Aye.
And Val Shelton votes aye. Okay. Next order of business. Mr. Cheney has come before us with a request for an extension to 56 X in a row tax map U for lot 12 in the M2A zone. Mr. Cheney, you have the floor.
Hey. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, as we all know, it's been a little bit of a trying time to get this project off the ground. And as of late, due to the fact that we have not been able to either get financing or a buyer, I started down a new path. And tried to acquire some of the adjacent land, which, you know, in January of this past year, we finally got the transfer of the town lot that's over by the railroad tracks there. And after finding out the lot was substantially smaller than probably we all thought. And that really didn't help. I reached out to the, oh, Jesus.
What happened, Walter?
You got me.
Keep going.
My, my screen went blank.
We still have you.
So, you know, I reached out to the railroad company. We were able to work up an agreement to purchase of which we finally closed not very long ago. And that's allowed me to try to address some of the issues that either the banks or the buyers or even, you know, my, I myself in trying to get this project off the ground. To work. And so we're hoping that all of this will be for naught and that the time spent to try to continue to make this project viable is going to be worth it. So, you know, like anything, time goes by so fast. And I can't even believe how much time has gone by. So I was just trying to come before you to look at trying to extend the whatever it's called. I'm having a brain fart, but.
Just six month period for the period that the planning board approved for meeting the conditions of approval.
Correct. So I'm looking to try to bang that out to like 2024 since we're already in 2020. And the way time goes by and how long it's taken for anything to get accomplished, especially with all that's going on. Before we know it, 2024 will be here. So that's why I'm before you in hopes that we can get somewhere where it will be a viable project.
Oh, just a couple of questions. Walter, when does the, when does your current extension expire?
Well, you know, I think not long ago, like within the last two weeks, I think I determined that that was actually expired in January.
Okay.
Because I looked back at the original approval and I think it was in January, then I came for an extension in June of 2017. So bottom line is, I think that they have expired as of January of 2020.
That do it? Okay, then. Diane, were you able to find anything on that?
I, I wasn't able to. I didn't have enough time.
Okay.
Meeting to do. Right now, as you know, we're under the governor's order that suspends timeframes for planning boards. So the fact that it expired at this point, I don't think is an issue. And also, you know, as we did, I think it was the last meeting or the meeting before, we went ahead and extended it for another six. In that particular case, it was for another six months beyond that date. Although I understand Mr. Cheney is looking for, is it true a four-year extension, Walter?
It'll be a four-year extension.
Walter, can you, can you bring up the, you know, the board up to speed as to what? What, what things that you have done since the approval? That were actually part of the conditions of approval? I mean, we certainly know the buildings have been removed.
Right. I mean, I really haven't done anything on the site other than removing the buildings, trying to clean it up. And then try to fix or figure out how to better position the property to actually get built. So outside of that, I haven't focused on any of the conditions of approvals. So it's, it's been kind of a albatross for me.
Now, with the new acquisition of additional land, do you anticipate that you would be looking to revise the current plan that has been approved, the site plan that has, that was approved?
Yes. So we're still working on it right now, but we should have all of the information in for you guys so that we can be coming in front of you in August. Yeah, for the next August meeting here on the 11th, I think. With, for consultation on the direction I'm trying to go, which is going to address most of either the bank or the buyer issues.
So are you anticipating an entirely new site plan or an amendment to the existing approval?
It's going to be an amendment to the existing, really other than adding parking. Better laying out, you know, trash and those kinds of things. And more importantly, the bigger problem with this project's been, everybody feels there's never been enough residential to carry the commercial. So we're going to be looking to try to increase some of the residential in some way. And we're still tweaking that to make that all work based on what we've been able to acquire between the railroad and the town lot.
Do any of the other members have questions for Mr. Cheney? Bill?
I have to sit down on this one.
Okay. Christian?
Yeah, I guess could we just clarify the timeline on this? So it expired in January 2020, which was before the governor's order went into effect, but sometime.
I'm sorry. I, I believe it was July. Or June, sorry. And I can verify that.
Yeah, I think we're good on the issue that because it's, even though it's expired because of the current governor's order, that we're, we have the authority to grant an additional extension. If someone has an issue with that, I'm sure they'll be calling Diane, but I think as a board, we have the ability to render what our position would be on it on this evening. Um, also McCall and Ted, I'm, I'm going to, I didn't. As alternates, I didn't bring you on, right, as full members? So both Ted and McCallie will be voting on anything tonight.
Okay. I know I don't have any comments in regards specifically to the extension.
Sarah?
No, no questions from me.
Jamie?
Is it possible to do a quick review of what the conditions were on the original approval?
Good question.
Having not been, having, having not been part of it before, if the request for extension is on the old conditions, is there a quick summary of what those were?
Walter?
Jamie, this was like four years ago. I, I do not have files here at home. So we would have to research that for the next meeting if you'd like me to.
Walter, can you comment on that, please?
I, I don't have that in front of me. I was not in that question. So I am not going to be able to help at this time, but it would be easy enough to get it to everybody.
McCall, did you have any questions? For Mr. Cheney? Okay. So Walter, I guess my only comment is, given that the plan is to come back with us with an amendment to the existing approval.
Yeah.
Wouldn't it be more fair to say that if we granted you, like a six month or one year extension on the existing approval, that that would give you adequate time to come before us on, with the new plan? And then at that point in time, that plan would have the statutory time period for approvals?
Absolutely. And, you know, pot, the lion's share, why I'm doing this tonight, knowing that I'm going to be in front of you next month, is being totally unsure of how this is working and the trouble trying to get it all fired up. So I don't disagree that, you know, we could address most of this a little bit further down, but I wanted to try the process, see how this was going to work so that it will be as smooth as possible as we move forward.
So I would be open, you know, to a six month or a one year extension on the current approved site plan. Anyone have any comments about that?
I, I agree with you. I'm, I'm okay with a shorter timeframe. I'm not in a position to comment on something that would last four years or five years.
Or anyone? So would anyone like to ma- make a motion to grant um a twelve-month extension?
Sure. Motion to uh extend, um, what is the exact term?
Fifty-six Exeter Road tax map U four lot twelve M two A zone redevelopment of that site.
Perfect. So motion to extend the redevelopment of fifty-six Exeter Road tax map U four lot twelve M two A zone for a period of twelve months.
So a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ted. It was Ted Sealy on a second, Christian Matthews on the first, or made the motion. Any further discussion on the motion?
Can I just, I will, for, when Walter comes back um for his revisions of his plan, I will be sure that the board has a copy of the old plan and also has a copy of the conditions of approval that were originally stated by the planning board. From what I recall, they're pretty much standard conditions, having a developer's agreement, um that sort of thing. So I don't think there's anything unusual in that um in those conditions.
That'd be great, Diane. Thank you. Um. Okay. Hearing no further discussion amongst the board, um I'll call the motion for vote. Bill, you've recused yourself. Christian?
I.
McCall?
Hi.
Ted?
Hi.
Sarah?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
And myself, Al Shelton, vote in favor. So Walter, you've got a twelve-month extension on the existing site plan. We look forward to um the revisions, proposed revisions you'll be bringing forth. So something can get going down there for everybody.
Great. Thank you very much for everybody's time.
Thanks for joining the, this uh technology. Uh next order of business, seventy-seven Hershey Lane LLC. There's a request for a continuation on the application by Walter Cheney Senior and Chinburg Builders for tax map R four lot three and ours two zone, open space subdivision. Um everybody should have gotten the updated wetlands um conver- communications that Diane has been sending us. So uh I think we'd like to grant this continuance um so that the parties have time to uh provide comments. And that the TRC, more importantly, has time to meet with the applicant again and our um technical people before this application gets before the, the, the board at the August meeting. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
A motion made by Jamie Bruton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Christian Matthews. Any further discussion on the request for continuation? Okay, I'll call the rope. Bill Dusette?
I'm staying.
Christian?
I.
McCall?
Hi.
Ted?
Hi.
Sarah?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
I vote in favor, motion passed unanimously. Um under note, new old business, discussion of permitted uses. Uh Christian asked us to kind of bring this to the, the board at this meeting, which was a discussion of the current permitted uses. And I, Christian, do you wanna lead us off on that?
Yeah, absolutely. Um so my printed documents finally came in handy. So I went through um but I don't know if we would just wanna have kind of an open discussion, maybe bring up an idea, talk about it, or if we all kind of wanna share all our ideas. What, what are we thinking here for how to have this discussion?
I think where we left the last meeting, it was if people could take a, um, or if people could review the uh table of permitted uses in the current zones. I think that's where we had wanted to kind of have a start of a discussion on the permitted uses. And we specifically just dealing with residential uses in the various zones. I'm sorry, Christian, that was kind of a question.
I mean, I don't think we put limits on it, but um yeah, I don't know if anyone looked at anything other than just residential in zones. So I'll, I'll just toss out some ideas. Um, you know, it's something I've brought up before. Maybe some of you have heard about it. Um so in our R two zone, um, I don't, I don't know, probably easier if I shared a screen, but.
The R Q zone, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the R two.
R two, okay, thank you.
Sorry, R two. So this is, you know, the area that's kind of outside core downtown. Um, you know, something that I've always thought is uh duplex residential and multifamily residential in that zone. Um, you know, when you look at the distance from downtown uh and sidewalk networks appearing, it seems to me that that's a pretty good spot to have redevelopment and try to densify neighborhoods. So that's one idea. And if it'd be easier, I can pull up the zoning map. If anyone doesn't have.
That'd be a great idea.
Yeah. Val, I think you just need to I think you just need to make me, let me share my screen. Maybe you need to make me a co-host. While you're pulling that up, Christian, um, Dan, just a question, when was the last master plan update?
We, as you know, Ted, we don't have the resources to do a comprehensive update um every five or ten years as is recommended. So what we do is uh we update one chapter at a time. And we took up the um housing and demographics section not that long ago. It was in two thousand fifteen. Um, we went through an extensive process. We had some assistance from the Strat Regional Planning Commission. Um, so that's one that's not um as outdated as some of the other chapters. We have a couple of chapters such as historic resources that hasn't been updated since two thousand one. So um, you know, we do what we can, given the resources we have. And every year, you know, the planning board is asked what, what chapter is most relevant and would we like to pursue? Uh right now, as you know, we're working on the water resource plan and Kyle Pimental is gonna be coming forward, hopefully at the next meeting to give us an overview of that. Um but that's basically how the process has worked since I've been here. And um and there is a, a flow chart or a spreadsheet that we put together that shows when various chapters have been updated. And we always have a discussion at the beginning of every year as to which ones we'd wanna pursue.
You share now, Christian?
No, I think I'm still waiting. Um, I don't know.
I'm set to share, to have all participants sharing simultaneously.
Okay, now it goes, sorry. Um, okay, perfect. Can you all see the zoning map?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Um, yeah, so the R two is this yellow color. Um, M one, you know, this is Mills right here. So basically, it's, it's this area just outside of like kind of downtown proper um sidewalk networks pretty much all along one fifty-two here.
So
Go ahead, Bill.
In the R two zone, y- you're, you're talking about whether or not, um, so what is allowed there now for, you said duplex multifamily. So is multifamily no longer allowed in that zone?
Do, only, only single family um is allowed.
Am I misreading this? Um Bennett Way is in the R two?
Yeah, pretty much, most of R two are non-conforming uses under current residential zoning.
And it looks like Hershey Lane.
Well, I, I think the Bennett Way portion, this is, this is R three where the apartments end. So then the single family comes right after it. And R three does allow duplex and multifamily.
So then when, when you go up past Bennett Way and turn right into where uh the condominiums are?
Yep. And I think those are all single-family uh condos.
No.
No.
That's all high-density Sewell Farms.
We have, and a lot of those were built before the current zoning was in effect. So in fact, they are grandfathered, and that includes the Darrell Woods development, which does include some townhouses and multifamily housing. But those were all um built prior to uh nineteen ninety-six, which is when the town, I understand, changed the zoning because of the phenomenal growth that was experienced in that portion of the town.
So Christian, in the, in the past, I've heard um the, the suggestion that the town of Newmarket has um a, its proportionate share of multifamily al- already. I don't know if that has, if that has changed, you know, in the past fifteen years to maybe that now we're at the point where we're actually behind on that.
Yeah, you'd like a, the residential needs survey that Stratford publishes.
Yes.
Right. And they actually did do that um analysis um as part of the update in two thousand fifteen. We looked at the balance of housing types in the community.
And do you recall just in broad strokes, uh whether uh their finding five years ago was that we were consistent um on, I mean, should we use the word affordable housing? Um, or, or are we um lagging in that?
No, I think that the feeling of the board at that time, and Val, you can um chime in if you would like, was that we have a really great balance of housing types in the community. And Newmarket had traditionally had more than its fair share of multifamily and rental housing um with, in respect to other, some of the more rural communities surrounding us. And that we have more than fifty percent of our housing stock is multifamily housing and over fifty percent of our housing stock is rental. And um the demographic housing report that the planning commission documented that. And we did have extensive discussions with the planning board at the time. And there was a feeling that we didn't really want to increase the density in those areas because of the widespread implications that would have in terms of changing the neighborhood chara- the character of neighborhoods. And also um that it was really contrary to how the town at that time wanted to grow. And of course, these discussions are always subject to change as time goes on. But I think there was several planning board members at the time who were very adamant that we really don't wanna increase the density in Newmarket because we have really done a great job in maintaining a reasonable balance. And we're not like other communities that um haven't done their fair share in terms of providing housing opportunities for low and moderate income families and uh for workforce housing.
So I'm gonna jump in on this. Um, the the issue at the time, and it was more at the town council than it was at the planning board, was the multifamily housing vis a vis single family. And the burden on services and the school system as a cause and effect of multifamily. And feeling that we had a disproportionate amount of multifamily housing in the, in the community than other neighboring towns. Um, and that could very much have been true at the time. Um in, and you have to understand that multifamily housing is also including all of the condominium units. Moody Point where I live, I'm in a single-family home, but we have, we have multifamily housing here. Um, the Sewell Farms condominiums, that's all multifamily. Those are all condos, but they're considered multifamilies. So multifamily is not just apartment buildings. Um, we were able to get the council on board with the rezoning into the M two A zone, which would allow more density there by, by doing mixed use within that zone. And the thought that, and we wanted to expand that up on the north corridor. And that didn't get approved. So the north gateway, which is now, I can't see, I think it's just M two. Um, B one, sorry, we wanted to convert B one over to M two A as well um to facilitate basically urban infill. That didn't go anywhere. But if you look at this zoning map, which is a good way to look at zoning, particularly for housing, the M one is the highest density. M two A, we've brought in additional housing density and combine, in combination with um, you know, uh with mixed uses. And then you go in, in those districts. So what's allowed is obviously single families, um multifamily and duplexes. Then you go jump out to the R two, and now you're down to single families. R three are single families in duplexes.
Multifamily also.
Yeah, in, in R three. And then you get to all of a sudden, you're at R one, which is just single family. So our, you have R two and R one as far as residential uses, I believe, are the same. Is that correct, Diane? That only single families are allowed. So you have, you know, so the difference between R two and R one is really just permitted uses such as, you know, adult daycare in one, but not in the other. It, it's not the, the four housing. You know, single families, multifamilies, duplexes.
Okay. I, I also wanted, if I could mention, there was a lot of interest in two thousand fifteen in infill development. And what I'm talking about is not the R two and the R one zones, but the other areas that are within what we call the urban core. Um, and there was a feeling that we should be allowing higher density. And we have actually approved several projects, um including Walt Cheney's project that um just came in tonight. That was for ten um units and they were um small apartments, from what I understand, one and two-bedroom apartments. That's in the R two zone, I believe. I'm not, oh, the, I'm sorry.
No, that's the M two A.
The M two A, I'm sorry, forgive me. Um, also, um, we had some duplexes built over on um Nichols Avenue. Um, that was a project that originally um we were looking at for multifamily housing. Bill Dusette probably remembers that when it first came in. It was, and uh we actually approved it for duplexes. And there are a couple of duplexes there. And over the years, the town has, through the zoning forward adjustment, has approved several duplexes. We just approved one a couple of weeks ago out on um on Wobly Falls Road for duplex. And of course, the one that's close to the town hall within walking distance of the downtown, there are four units that were approved there. So I think that we quite a bit of opportunity in the town for a variety of housing types. And of course, we can't forget Eric DeWitt, who um came into the planning board and is actually putting some micro apartments um in a mixed youth development on, within the M two A zoning district, um which you know, we've been working on and that's actually coming to fruition. He got his developer's agreement signed and approved, and he is going, working on his financing and is moving forward with that. So um, I, I just, and the Selectwood property is another one that comes to mind, which is fifteen units of, originally it was gonna be low-income housing, and they were looking to the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority for some low-income housing tax credits, but they couldn't get the figures to work due to market conditions. So they are still going ahead with the project. It's for fifteen units. That's the last piece, remaining piece of our mill district that needs to be redeveloped. And um that's a project that will be providing not assisted housing or low-income housing at this point, but market rate housing, which will really help to boost and be consistent with the character of the um, the mill district as we now know it. Um, and of course, there's the Grave Street project that we approved, which is a four-unit townhouse project um which provides housing opportunities in New Village, which, which are within walking distance. So I guess, I wanna just dispel this notion that Newmarket isn't doing its fair share. We're not taking affordable or workforce housing seriously. We have done more than many communities in the state of New Hampshire. We're not taking affordable or workforce housing seriously. We have done more than many communities in the state of New Hampshire. And I feel very strongly that we have a balanced housing stock and we should be looking very carefully at anything that's going to increase density, especially in that area that you're referring to. Because there is some very challenged, if you will, environmentally challenged land. And of course, this development that's before us now, where there are in, where there are very steep slopes and there are wetlands. So, you know, we need to be very cautious about increasing density in those areas. And what that is going to do in terms of changing the character of the community, that I think we are all very, very happy and willing to protect from indiscriminate development and high density development.
So I think just going back to the B one, if we're really looking for the, you know, I think the discussion is there's going to be growth in Newmarket. Where do we want as a board to, for good planning, have that growth occur? And I think that given the projects going on with the gateways, revisiting that north, you know, B one zone on, you know, going towards Durham, when we did the analysis on there, there was a, a vast majority of those homes, I don't have the, 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 the report right in front of me, but more of the properties than not in that zone are non-conforming. They're not businesses. They're duplexes, apartments, you know, in homes. There, there's very few businesses there, even though that's what it was zoned. And again, I think that if we're looking for the expansion of the downtown into other areas for, for housing density, that would be one to look at. And most of the research was done when we did that whole M two A project several years ago. And it would fit in with the Gateway District for what they're looking to do there.
I think.
I think, I think that as a board, from going through the last housing update on the master plan, we really didn't want to see more high density out in the R one zones. I don't think anyone was talking about that unless it was over a really, what, what would we do with B three? You know, out on one fifty-two with doing, you know, a C C R C, that would obviously be higher density.
I think Diane, has, has Steve shared anything with you about the proposed changes for B one in the north gateway? I know that he's mentioned possibly some changes he would bring forth.
We've been working on a gateway concept for a couple of years and we have a consultant, Sue Arnett, who's under contract. And as a matter of fact, everything was put on hold, you know, because of the pandemic. But actually, I have a copy of his draft report and they are recommending some zoning changes up in that area. And also recommending that the town move forward with some grant applications because there's money available through groups like Plan New Hampshire and to help, you know, communities who are interested in reworking some of their zoning. But I guess, you know, my feeling is any proposal to increase density has to be carefully looked at in terms of the buildability of land, in terms of what the visual impact is going to be. And, you know, how, is that something that would change the character of the community? I'm looking at the M two zone right now, I mean, the R one, R two zone right now. And most of that land and the land that hasn't been built on is open space. Because there have, Darrell Woods, which I think is the development you live in, Christian, you know, that has several acres of open space and conservation land that was set aside as part of the zoning of that land back in the mid eighties. So there really isn't much land left. So I would say that before we think about doing any density changes, that we do a build out analysis and see what it translates into in terms of additional housing units. And, you know, we, we need to have some policy discussions, not only at the planning board level, but also engage the public in that process to see how the public feels that we should be growing. And if this is, you know, that's an appropriate model that the town should pursue in the future.
Christian?
Yeah, so I think the way that I look at the housing needs assessment is that's a bare minimum. You know, if you're meeting the minimum of what Strafford is suggesting, that's good for you. But I think we should always be striving to achieve higher. You look across the state, I think we have like less than a one percent vacancy rate. So that means we do still have issues. You know, if you talk to younger people, older people, we do have affordability issues here in Newmarket. So to, to talk about, you know, four units here, eight units there, that's great. I love it. But to take, you know, probably seventy, seventy-five percent of our town and say you can only build a single family unit, well, that only, that means you're stuck with a certain level of housing. You know, affordable housing can result from smaller sizes, smaller footprints, duplexes and multifamily. Specifically, I've mentioned the R two a number of times because there's water, there's sewer, there's already roads there. So we're not taking on new liabilities for public infrastructure. And we can allow conversions. We don't need to build on conservation land. We don't need to take out huge swaths of acres in the western parts of town. So the R two to me makes so much sense, the B one makes so much sense, but the R two specifically because you are protecting character. By taking a single family home and converting it to a duplex, you're not changing the outer structure. Also, character of homes built in two thousand, now there's not that much character. They all kind of look the exact same at this point. Character downtown, absolutely. But to not focus on, you know, probably a ten percent area that would be the next steps in development, I think is a mistake.
Bill, any comments?
I, I think it's wonderful. As a planning board, I think we should have these types of discussions. I think we're called planning board instead of regulatory board for a reason. I know very little about it, but I'm, I'm, I, I understand that there's a proposal before the city of Dover right now for a, a different format of affordable housing. It is a very small footprint, sta- single, single family detached. You know, there, it's not a mini house or a micro house, but it's, it's small. So if you think about what is that Rockham Country Club right now, I'm guessing those are somewhere between eighteen hundred and twenty-five hundred square feet. They're looking at less than that. And like I said, I know very little about it, other than that the city is very excited that there's a potential to have a development in their community where the people that work in the community may be able to buy and, and own.
Macal? Macal, any comments?
I think it's a great idea. I think it would be worth looking into build out analysis of the town and see where we are because, because the priorities are changing. So from my perspective, I think it would make sense. I'm all about infill development. I'm all about increasing densities. So for me, you know, making the town more walkable and less automobile dependent is something that I would wish for Newmarket. So if we can do something about it, I would be all for it.
Okay, thank you. Jamie, comments?
I def- I'm definitely liking the idea of focusing on continuing the gateway conversations. And I think generally from what I've seen over the years, we've pretty much been open to a lot of what's been brought to the town. So like what we have isn't necessarily even set. And then hopefully, people that are having new ideas that see something different don't stop and not ask because of how it's set up now. I would love to have another look at the zoning map when, in the R two where I don't, I don't have a good visual of which one of these are the open spaces. I'd love to have a recolorization of the ones that were the space that we've determined is not to be built out and look at it again.
Okay.
And no, they all seem like good ideas to me right now.
Thank you. Sarah?
I don't have any comments.
Ted?
Yeah, I think, I, I certainly, Christian, you know, coming from the affordable housing world, I, I certainly agree. You know, regarding the affordable issue. You know, as a, as a recent, recent homeowner and my parents moved here and they live in the, in Newmarket Mills. You know, my, my other thought is, you know, just from a practical standpoint, is a resource issue. And, you know, just thinking about where would an initiative like this fall into our priorities? And, and more so just asking the question and, and, you know, thinking, you know, wondering about it and thinking about it like, you know, you know, in terms of, you know, Diane, you mentioned, you know, the completion of the update for the water resource plan. I'd be interested sort of what's, what's next up on that list? What, what's sort of the priority that, you know, the planning board and the council has been thinking about? And then, you know, maybe working backwards from that and figuring out where, you know, where in something like this would work, you know, how we could sort of fit that in. But I, I do think it, it will take a lot of resources. I mean, you know, town, town input, you know, build out analysis, market study. You know, a lot of resources that are spread thin right now. So we have to be careful what we choose.
Okay, thank you. So there's kind of a mixed consensus here. If you can have a mixed consensus, it's like a divided board. I think one thing we might want to think about is, let's take a look at the recommendation for action items under the last housing chapter of the master plan update and see if there are some action items there that I think might go to your point, Ted, that we just, you know, haven't prioritized. But that, you know, we had, you know, what's, those should be living documents. So maybe we could review that. I think we certainly, in conjunction with the town council and the, the consultant that's been hired by the town, take another look at that B one zone on the northern cor- corridor. There's already been an awful lot of build out analysis done there. So I think we could look at that. And we know that we have, even though we haven't seen them come to, you know, fruition, there have been developers coming forward on the M two A zone with plans, you know, to the Diane just spoke of. So can we, can we direct where growth in the town will be? So I think that if we revisit that housing chapter, I, I think we may not be reinventing the wheel. Maybe some of those, that time within resources already been spent and it's just a matter that it hasn't been implemented. So I think maybe, I know Diane, you could probably actually, we, I know we have the access to the mapping that we could do the overlays of the open space and conservation lands and by various districts. We've looked, because we did, we looked at that before. So that might be something that we could get out. I mean, Jamie wanted to look at that and that might be helpful to Christian.
The Water Resource Plan is going to be presented for final draft in August. So, you know, we usually have these discussions once a year and many times in concert with the town council. We have a joint meeting usually in the fall. This year it didn't happen until, it was late in November if I recall correctly. But, you know, we're looking at next year for a possible project. And maybe this is the time to revisit that chapter. The other thing we didn't talk about that was discussed at great length when we did the housing update was accessible apartments. And we've had a lot of interest from people in the idea of maybe making it less stringent and allowing ADUs, if you will, in separate structures on individual lots. At the time that we did the last master plan update on housing, there was a very strong feeling that we didn't want to allow that. And so it, you know, when we did do an update, I don't know what year it was, two thousand and seventeen, we didn't deviate from what our previous plan was. Of course, under the state law, we have the option of having it in detached or attached units. And we decided with the attached variety, but there are some areas in town where maybe it's appropriate in the rural areas where you don't have a high density and you can tuck away a unit and nobody knows it's there. So I, I think I'd be willing to look at the accessory dwelling unit concept and maybe identify some areas in rural part of town, R one town, section of town, where that type of use would be appropriate.
That's an interesting concept. I think we'd have to see if, if we can legally limit where a detached accessory unit would be. So that'd be a good question.
Pretty sure we can do that, Bill. I don't think that's a problem.
Okay, so I think we want to continue this discussion and certainly include the council on the discussion when we meet with them jointly. So and hopefully we'll have an update on the gateway end because that's definitely going to be leading into more of a high density rezone in that area for residential, in order to get any projects going forward.
I do want to mention that I was, spoke with a developer last week who's interested in doing a workforce housing project in Newmarket. As you probably know, the Willie House has been sold. And he's interested in moving some of the tenants from that location to a new facility. And they're looking at the railroad yard off Railroad Deepwater Street, Railroad Street. And that whole complex where New England Barricade is located. And they're talking about developing twenty-five units of workforce housing. And they've been in touch with your colleagues, Ted, at the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority about the possibility of doing a project. So we do.
Excuse myself of any direct.
You know, that's a really appropriate place for that type of use is within walking distance of the downtown. And I think it would also result in a redeveloped old mill, mill structure, which, you know, is really consistent with what we've been trying to do in the downtown area. So I just wanted to mention that. That was really an interesting discussion I had with the developer.
I think this is a topic we will continue with, but if there's no further discussion on it.
I just have a question for Diane. So my question is, what were the voices against ADUs in the town, additional dwelling units? What was the critique of the ADUs that you mentioned?
I, I'm sorry, Macal, I can, I, the reception isn't very good here. I really didn't understand.
Okay, so what was the critique of ADUs? Why was it criticized in the town?
Yeah, I'll answer that question. So the, the issue with the prior council was, and some committee members on the planning board that worked on that, was the, of not permitting detached accessory dwelling units. So I think there's a, you know, obviously there's a different board, there's a different council now. The thought there was, you know, one thing to have an attached accessory dwelling unit. They, people felt they would be smaller, more studio style apartments as opposed to having higher density by basically having another detached structure on the same lot. That, that's really what it boiled down to. They thought it would be higher density, population density by permitting people who had, you know, sufficient land, you know, dimensions to be able to support a, basically a second house on the lot. There was also the discussion, and you can get into this, between duplexes and, and detached accessory dwelling units. If you have a detached accessory dwelling unit, you have no further tax value or minimal on the. you have no further tax value or minimal on the land as opposed to if you had, um, you know, i- i- if somebody was able to do like the duplexes on that they condominiumized down on the, you know, the Beach Street extension. Now you're taxing those individual units differently than you are with a single family lot with an accessory dwelling unit. Because it's accessory to the use. It's not, as opposed to a duplex where that is the, the primary use is two separate units. And you're limited. But I, I think we're at a different council now and I certainly think we're at a different board makeup in regards to opinions on having them detached. Christian?
Bill, I mean, do you want to have this detached ADU as a separate discussion from the, from the, maybe like a zoning redevelopment? I know at the town council level, this idea is um positively received. And I, there's been no discussion about having restrictions on it by area. I know I personally um would want detached everywhere. I don't, you know, pushing additional housing into R one where everyone would have to drive downtown creates the parking problem that everyone talks about. So um,
Right.
I, I wouldn't see the need to restrict it.
But I think that's just a general question to get answered first and before we even discuss that. Okay, but yes, I mean, to answer your question, we can certainly take it up separately. It's a, it's under zoning ordinance, you know, so we could just modify that ordinance as we did when this, when the state, um, when the state adopted new regulations. We, we, you know, we formed a committee, committee looked into the regulations, reported back to the, to the board. Um, you know, board had the public hearings on it and then it went to the council. So if you want to, I'm sorry, Diane?
That was in two thousand seventeen.
Okay, so, you know.
The state law, and we changed that ordinance.
Yeah, we needed to be con- con- you know, compliant with the state law. So Christian, if you want to kind of spearhead that, with another member, you know, or two? Um, we can definitely move that forward.
Absolutely. Um, anyone want to volunteer themselves?
Sure. I'll go over that with you.
Okay. Macau?
I'm taking a comprehensive exam in a week that takes three weeks, so I'm really busy right now.
You may be in the fall.
Yeah.
Right, Christian, why don't you and Jamie run with that?
Okay. I'm sure we're not going to move fast either, Macau, so.
Okay, any committee reports or any committees meeting? Sarah, it's the Conservation Commission meeting?
They had their first meeting, I think, in a couple months uh last week, but I was not able to attend.
Okay. Uh, Ted, you on capital?
Yeah, I wanted to ask Ted if you were still interested in being on the capital reserve, capital improvements planning.
Yes, I am. Yeah. I, I really haven't started the ball rolling with it. So Diane, yeah, you and I need to talk. Um, and I can reach out to you outside of this.
Yeah, um, I mean, we need to start that process fairly quickly. Um, I think we have a very short fuse. Once again, uh, we have to get something to the town administrator by September first. Um, we do have a new um budgeting, municipal budgeting module that we're learning about um and implementing. And perhaps we can use that to help facilitate the um process so that we don't have redundancies. So I need to sit down with Steve Fornier and the finance director and, and try to figure out if, if we can um enroll that program, the munis program, so that we can use it as a tool for CIP this year. That's what my hope is anyway. But we're looking at starting up meetings, virtual meetings again, uh probably August, August first, which is right around the corner, as you know.
Okay.
We also need an alternate member from the planning board on that committee. Is there any interest in that for any of the board members?
Okay, Christian, you want to report on the impact um fees, the committee we had?
Bill, do you want to mention that one?
Sure. So, um, so there was a general discussion. Diane was involved as well, Christian, myself and um John Kepper, Kyper. Um, with regards to the planning board taking a position on impact fee on our ordinance and whether or not the planning board uh would want to make a recommendation to the town council as to changes to that ordinance. Um, I think we were all of a consensus that the water and sewer impact fees, we would, just as the board was last time around, we would rather see those replaced with um uh system charges, system development charges. That would give the town council as well as the um water and sewer departments more flexibility. They wouldn't, in, in order to implement those and to uh change them and then more importantly, how to use those um funds. Um, and then relative to uh the last two remaining impact fees, which would be the school and recreation. Um, you know, do we feel that we should still have impact fees on, um, ordinance on the books for new development with regards to those two items or any additional items? And if that was the case, because this was last done twenty years ago, um, would we really be looking for the council to um, uh, or the budget to include funding in order to go out and really do the analysis required to um, to develop the need for the impact fees? And then more importantly, what those impact fees should be based upon projected capital improvements that would be coming down the pipe because of growth. So that's kind of where the committee was at, was basically if we're going to continue with the uh impact fee ordinance, that it really needs to be funded and brought, you know, into twenty twenty as opposed to being back still at two thousand. Any thoughts from any members on that? Everybody can kind of, Bill?
Those recommendations make sense to me.
Any other comments?
I think, I think just that um from the town council, you know, Diane had said that she was going to take some time and be able to look into some of those numbers. That way we can go to the town council and say, hey, you know, it's going to cost maybe fifty thousand dollars or something to look at the impact fees. And I think that might, um, that number might influence the idea of, well, do we get rid of them? Do we add more? Do we change them? So I think that's, that's going to be great to get some of those numbers. And I think the committee was a great idea also.
Yeah. Yeah, so Diane, you were going to follow with Matt, right? Get a proposal? Or just an idea? Yeah, maybe.
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments? Any other committee reports? Christian?
I can just share a couple, kind of the bigger things from the town council. Um, so uh, as you all maybe have seen, the work on the McIntosh and Tucker well project is happening. So they've taken down that structure. Um, sewer rate increases have gone into effect. Um, you know, it's, it's a little bit here and there. Um, and then we're going to start getting two wards for voting. So um, keep an eye out for a nice map there. You can overlay it on the zoning maps.
Yeah.
Yeah, not, not too much, but staying busy.
Diane, any other information from planist's report?
Yeah, um, I've been working with Donna Lane, who is a CBBG grants um writer. And we are, have been working over the last three months on putting together uh three grant applications that will be submitted to the New Hampshire, hopefully, to the New Hampshire Community Development Finance Authority for projects under the Community Development Block Grant Program. And one is for continued renovations to the New Market Housing Authority and replacing their um, um, water line, internal water line system um and making energy conservation improvements, et cetera. And the other is um implementation of some water improvements on new growth that we've been working on for several years. We have uh preliminary engineering completed. And um, we're, we're hoping that we can get some community development block grant funds um to the tune of um, you know, about half a million dollars um to make that project work. We've also applied for some money through the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. And the third one, uh, which is really a priority for the state who, under that program. Um, I've been working with Ree Cooper from the Link Together Program um to develop a infant and young children childcare facility within hopefully close proximity to the New Market Elementary School so that would provide an opportunity for teachers and would help to um possibly recruit new teachers to the area because I know that um there's um difficulties in recruiting and keeping, retaining teachers in the school system. Um, so those are a couple of really great projects that are intended to benefit low and moderate income persons. And um, you know, we're hopeful that we can get some money. There's a lot of money that's come down through the federal pipeline recently through the COVID nineteen pro- pandemic. And we hope that New Market can get some um federal funding to be able to make some very worthwhile projects uh go forward in the town. There's a public hearing tomorrow night at the town council meeting and we're hoping that we can move forward with the applications, which are due on July twenty seventh.
Thank you. Any other no, new or old business? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion to adjourn. Jamie, you're on.
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, everyone, stay safe, be well. Thank you so much for, for participating.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Thank you.
Take care. Bye-bye.